Well, welcome. Our journey into the silly season continues. Once more, we have somebody on the set. One of the seven people who have not only said, "We should fix, improve, make better," any descriptor you want to use. Not only somebody who has talked about it, but somebody who stood up and said, "I'm willing to help make things better." So my hat's off to all of the people, and this year, seven of them running for three spots. So there's going to be a tectonic shift in the school committee. But let's start with an introduction.
Hi, Al. Thanks for having me. I'm Sarah Howe, and I'm running for school committee.
Sarah, I always start with the same question. Now, I mean, you've been on Kevin's show and town meeting member?
Yes.
Precinct?
Two.
So you've been involved in town government for a while?
A little while.
But I'm going to start with the same question I ask everybody. Sarah, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
It's a good question. So I'm also from Milford, although maybe quite as long as you. But I am from Milford for the last nine years, and I've really grown to love this town. My husband and I moved here before we had children, and I worked at EMC. So it was a natural fit to be in Milford. I also do have some relatives here. But, you know, and we've spent a lot of time. I mean, when I first moved to Milford, I taught a class for community use. You know, I was engaged from the get-go in a number of things. And then after we had children, of course, like, the amount of participation in the school, not even in the schools, but in town, really increased. So, and we've just loved every minute of it, really. The, you know, the opportunities to participate in town, the people we've met. And so we've put down roots here, and we want to continue that. And so this is sort of, for me, this is the next phase in not only giving back to the community, but helping to build the community and make sure that we are viewed as I see us, right? As a town that has a great school system, great extracurricular activities, and is a great place to raise a family.
What brought you to Milford?
So as I mentioned, I worked at EMC for 10 years. I'm no longer there, but I was living in Boston after college and working at EMC and doing the reverse commute out to Westboro. And my husband and I had been married a few years, and we were ready to buy our first home. And we came out this way. And, you know, we just, we really liked Milford. I have a couple cousins who live in Milford, grew up here, Julie Gonzalez and Carol Pearl. And so, you know, I talked with them.
Carol Pearl, like John Pearl?
No.
Oh.
Carol Pearl, like Carol and Julie Moran.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. And so, so we just, we picked Milford. I live off of 109 on the Medway Line, that little neighborhood across from 495 Rental, where, you know, there's just a great community in that neighborhood even, and we've just fallen in love with it.
That's all Virginia and all those streets?
Virginia Drive, that's my street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I was amazed when I was coaching soccer, one of my kids lived down there.
Yeah.
I thought Milford ended at 495.
It doesn't. There's a whole other neighborhood.
A whole other neighborhood in there.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, and a lot of kids, and a lot of kids in that neighborhood. So it's, it's been a great place for my family.
So now, if you look at the upcoming school year?
Yes.
If you're on the school committee, what do you think would be the three biggest challenges you would face?
So there's always the challenge of all that needs to be done to, you know, you know, to look at facilities and make sure they're leading edge and that kids are being, you know, we're able to scale our facilities to meet the needs of the burgeoning community and the number of people we have here. So that's certainly one thing. And then, you know, an ongoing challenge, I think, in Milford is the transient population and then the new population, a lot of whom are coming here from other countries and need additional services, like, you know, specialized ELL services and things of that nature. So that'll continue for Milford to be, I believe, something that we need to work, to embrace and address as best we can in the schools. So those are, you know, two major things I think we see in the school. And then, you know, really, I believe that our reputation really is, needs to be sort of enhanced. And, you know, I wish that, that, you know, other people would sort of see us as a destination town, you know, like I see us. And so figuring out how we continue to market ourselves outside of Milford and into other parts of the state and/or people who might be coming from elsewhere as really a choice place to be, I think, is something that we'll continue to need to work on.
Do you think kids get a good education in Milford?
I think kids get a great education in Milford. I think that a lot of it is up to the kid and the parents, right? And their engagement with their education and all the other things that go into educating a child. I really believe, we talk about this at work a lot, like, you know, your whole self. You bring your whole self to work. We need to work on educating the whole child, the whole student. So academically, socially, emotionally, and, you know, musically and sports and activities. Like, you want children that are coming out of school well-rounded and prepared for life. And so I think Milford does a great job. I've, I've not had any issues with the education my children are receiving so far, although I only have one so far in schools. I still have two little ones that, one's starting kindergarten next year in the fall, and then one who's three, so she'll be a couple of years before she starts. But yeah, I think children in Milford get a great education. They do.
So now, I know the social, emotional piece is near and dear to your heart.
It is, yes.
Tell us about it.
You know, in today's world, children, well, first of all, if we look at the populations, it's a very diverse population in terms of, you know, backgrounds, socioeconomic, you know, status. There's just, there's a lot, right? And children today are, sometimes, there's a lot of pressure for kids. And it's different than when I grew up or, you know, other people might have grown up where, you know, it was, you go ride your bike around the neighborhood and you do, you know, whatever, and you see your friends face-to-face, and you're chatting, and you're talking, and you're playing. There's a lot more stuff done online or, you know, a lot, there's just a lot more screens, right? And technology. And I think the social, emotional part and helping to sort of cultivate that person, that child, that whole child, is really critical today especially because they're not, you know, doing in-person things as much. There is so much more online. There's so much more out there for them to know. Information is so accessible. And how do they interpret that? And how do they deal with it? And how do they, you know, deal with everything they see on TV or hear on the internet or whatever the case may be? So, you know, I think it is important, you know, to build resiliency, project management skills, communication skills. You know, the anti-bullying effort is really helped a lot by social, emotional learning programs. Empathy, you know, these are all things that are really critical, I think, to be a well-rounded, kind and contributing adult. And I think it's important that we, we help our children to develop those skills, yes.
When I think about when we were kids, not you, me, way back when in the old days, we really looked at Kevin's job as superintendent and the educator's job was to educate our children, not raise them.
Right.
I mean, you know, not that I ever did anything bad.
Of course not.
Because luckily, they don't watch the show, but I was always a perfect child.
Yeah.
Yes. But if anything ever happened and I did something less than intelligent, my only concern was, "Please don't call my parents."
Right, right.
I was scared to, and my parents, my father never touched me.
Yeah.
But if I ever did something that would embarrass the family, I can't say kill me because today's day and age, people take all that noise literally. But he would have not made my life super pleasant that evening.
Yeah.
If he had to go down and apologize.
Right.
But I see more and more of a shift that we're asking our teachers to not only educate our children, but to take part in raising them.
You know, I think that it takes a village, especially today. It is different. There, people are contending with so many different things in society. We have a much different population now. There's children in our town who live with a fear that you or I could never understand because we were born and raised in this country probably. And we don't have any sort of concern about our parents having to leave the country or go somewhere else, you know?
Oh, I see. Because I was going to say, my biggest fear was that I'd run into the bully and I'd get my block knocked off and be embarrassed.
Yeah.
But okay, you kind of sucked up your pride and went with your friends and went home, and the next day, life was normal again.
Sure. And I think that sort of stuff still happens, but, you know, now people bully over the internet.
Yeah.
And parents can't see it, and teachers can't see it. And I don't for one second think that it is not a parent's job to raise their children. It's obviously, and one of the things that I'm also really sort of passionate about and believe in is parent engagement and making sure parents are engaged in their children's education and in their children's lives, right? But again, it is, it is different. I, I come from a home, you know, my home that I, my husband and I have, we're both working parents. And that wasn't the home that I grew up in, right? I had my mom stayed at home and my dad went to work. And usually, you know, a lot of times, that was the way it was. And my mom, you know, if I was on the phone with my friends, she could pick up the phone and hear what was going on and, you know, know what was happening in my life. And it's, it's completely changed. Even 10 years from when I was in high school, my brother was in high school, and my mom's like, "I don't know where, he has a cellphone. I don't know what he's doing. I don't know who he's talking to." And so it's important for parents to stay engaged, but it's important that we're all helping children to teach them about, you know, being resilient, being strong, not, you know, not, you know, I have to monitor my child's Kindle, right? She plays Kindle and there's chat apps in there, and you don't know if a chat app is going to pop up or not. And you got to go in, you got to explain to her, like, "Don't use the chat apps. You don't know who's out there. You have to be thoughtful or take the thing off." But kids literally have so much access to stuff that I think we all need to be diligent.
Yeah, it's funny because I grew up in the Heights, and it seemed like we had 20 mothers. Because when you were doing something, if it wasn't what you should be, you know, Joe's mother or Paul's mother would yell at you. And that was like gospel. It was like it was coming from your mother.
Yeah.
You know, but there was a safety that we always had our rivalries.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, Lubieav had their kids, the Heights had theirs, the Plains had theirs, and we had the natural rivalries. But at the end of the school day, I retreated back to the Heights with all my friends. And although we had our, anyway, let's face it, you put that many kids together, you're going to have some pseudo-bullying.
Yeah.
But it was never, you never worried.
No.
You know, because at the end of the day, we're picking on Manny, and tomorrow, we're picking on Joe.
Right.
And next week will be my turn. Today, the kids can't get away from it, can they?
I don't think they can in a lot of instances with social media. I think it becomes very difficult. Now, I don't have a teenager. My child is not on social media. So I haven't experienced it firsthand, but I've, from my cousins and other people and, you know, just obviously what's gone on, and they've, they've had talks about it, right? The high school has one next week. You know, I think it, they, they can't really get away from it. They can't get away from the information. They can't get away from the, you know, and so it's, it needs to be, they need to be educated differently on how to cope with it. And oftentimes, they, they can't just come home at 3:00 and talk to their mom and dad about it because their mom and dad are still working.
Are working?
And, and again, that's very different from, from how I grew up.
And you're explaining a core family is coming home to mom and dad. I mean, I was always amazed. We were three against two.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I married a saint because when my dad passed away, my darling bride moved my mother in with us. So the whole time from when my oldest was one, grandma was home.
Right.
So there were always three of us to gang up on two.
Yeah.
Today, and when I started coaching soccer, I had single parents. How one parent keeps up with two or three kids, I was always amazed.
Yeah.
So even if the kids want to come home, now you're splitting one adult who's working, sometimes two jobs, just to keep up.
Right.
But at least working full-time. I mean, that's got to have an impact.
Of course, yeah. It definitely has an impact. And I think, you know, you don't know what the impact's going to be. Every parent's doing their best probably, you know, hopefully.
You would hope.
I would hope. And so, you know, and so it's hard to know. And that's where I think the village does sometimes need to step in and say, you know, "How can we help you?" Or "How can we help the parents to help themselves?" Because, I mean, I can speak for myself. I'm a working mom. I, you know, I'm very passionate about my work. I'm obviously passionate about my family and my community. And it's, it's a lot. It's a lot. And I think I want to set a good example for my children and be involved and be engaged and be there for them. And so parents are asked to really, to really do a lot as our teachers. I mean, it's just, it's just the way of the world, I think, a lot, in a lot of ways.
It's really hard because I cheated. From when they were six years old, I coached them in soccer. I mean, I can say I did it for the kids and pretend.
Yeah.
I did it for me. All of a sudden, my kids were around me three nights a week, and their friends were around us three nights a week. And then if we didn't have a Friday night game, we'd go to the movies. So since they were, you know, seven years old, we were together four nights a week. You know, and I used to get behind the steering wheel and kind of cower so that, you know, hopefully they wouldn't notice me, and you could just listen to their discussions over who's doing what.
Sure.
It was amazing how much I learned by being the doormat.
Yeah. The doorman. The driver.
Yeah.
Not the doormat.
I felt like a doormat. They just walked all over me, you know? It didn't matter.
I think that's how we all feel.
But, you know, it was, really made me feel better because I really did get, even when I didn't want to hear things as they became teenagers.
Yeah.
But at least I knew.
Yeah.
And I don't know how parents can do that if they're not directly involved. And I'm not taking a shot at them because, like I said, we cheated. We had three against two. I never had babysitters because if we wanted to go out, grandma was there.
Right.
You know, grandma was always there to backstop when my darling bride and I had to do something.
Sure, yeah.
You know, not everybody has that luxury.
No, not everyone does. And that's not to say, I think there's a lot of parents out there who are doing it and doing their best. You know, my husband is the coach. He coaches everything. He volunteers at the school all the time. Like, he wants, he's there and he's involved. And there's a lot of parents who are doing the very same things, you know? And that's where I say, like, you know, I don't think we, we need to try and be everything to these children in terms of as educators. I don't know that, that they need to be, but, but there are a lot of children who do need that little bit extra. And there are parents who do need a little bit of, that weren't maybe modeled the same example that you modeled for your children or my husband and I are trying to model for our children. And maybe it's because they came from a different culture, or maybe it's because it's just their mom's working three jobs to get food on the table.
True.
I mean, who knows? But, you know, we have to serve needs of all those children, right? And so that's where, you know, again, bringing back, that's where I think it's important to offer some services, both for parents and children. And the social, emotional learning programs that the, that the Milford Public Schools have put into place do offer a lot too to parents. I mean, there's a lot of things that, if you look at the three-year plan for the Milford Public Schools, that they're trying to, to offer for parents as well as children.
So social, it sounds like one of these wonderful world peace.
I know.
What does it really mean?
I think it really means just, you know, educating people on things like how to deal with anxiety, how to deal with bullying, how to manage your time, how to, how to stay engaged in your children's lives, what questions to ask. I mean, it's, it's anything that's not a true academic course. I think you could consider, you know, helping to build the character of a person. And I think those are, and so offering, you know, seminars or learnings or, you know, different ways of interacting with, with children, that's pretty much what it is. And certainly, they have programs that the school has purchased that are like, you know, that are core, like, programs that they would go and implement. And I think that they're trying to do a lot of that. I think that, you know, that you have to balance it obviously with the academics and the academic rigor that we want to bring to the classroom and that we want children to bring to, to school. But if you think about it, if a child is worried about being bullied or if a child isn't, you know, sure what time mom's coming home because, you know, she's working or whatever, it's, it's hard when you go to school if you have all this anxiety about other things in your life that you don't know how to deal with or address, like, you know, then it's hard to, to learn.
You know, and it's funny because, again, I cheated. I had girls.
Yeah.
Being a father?
Yeah.
It's wonderful because the girls always take care of their father.
Yeah.
You know, I remember when it came junior year, my darling bride was really mean to my daughter. She'd come home and say things like, "Hi." And my daughter would go off the wall. "What do you mean by that? Why, how was your day? Why do you want to..." You know, and it's like, they'd look at me if they started that way. I said, "Seriously?" And they'd know right away, "Uh-uh."
Yeah.
You know, "You want to go out this weekend? You need a driver? You best not be mean to the old man sitting here." You know, I didn't have to say it, but it, but you know, you sit there and say, as a parent, you want, you want to know and you don't want to know.
Right.
But I found that the more I knew about them and their friends, you know, the more I got involved, yes, I'm, I'm doing it for my daughter. I loved it. I rationalized it by saying, "I'm doing it for her."
Right.
And if you ask my ungrateful offspring number two, she'll tell you that she was traumatized as a child because she can remember the field trip I missed and the dance I didn't attend.
Right.
And I sat there and said, "You know, somehow I don't think, that's a terrible scorecard that in all the years..."
Yeah.
"...I missed one field trip and one dance."
That's great.
But it's funny that you don't believe that they notice things.
Yeah, kids notice everything.
But you know, here it was into the ninth, 10th grade, and she brings up that, I can't even remember. She knew it was like fifth grade, I'd missed a field trip.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they do. They notice and remember everything.
Helping parents know how to open those doors.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I can't talk about men's relationships with their sons. I have a grandson, and it's so different.
Yeah.
He's now almost three, two and a half.
Yeah.
It's such a world of difference from having two girls. So the father-daughter thing, I can talk about.
Yeah.
But I remember it was so much easier for me, and that's terribly sexist to say, but the girls always felt bad for dad and always took care of their old dad.
Yeah.
You know, my darling bride had to put up with the worst of all.
Yeah. I remember. I was a teenage girl once. So I remember what it was like, but...
But now, you invite people in. How do you answer the question when somebody comes to you and says, "How do I get the best education for my child in Milford?"
I think you answer it by saying, "Be engaged." I mean, with everything, like, in my professional, I'm a human resources professional, right? And I, my, what I specialize in is talent management and employee engagement. And the most successful employees are the ones who are engaged, you know, who are engaged in, and again, talking about the whole self. They're not just engaged in their day-to-day responsibilities, they're engaged in their, you know, sponsoring some kind of diversity and inclusion group, or they're, they're taking courses that we offer through learning and development, or, you know, they're sitting on, you know, engagement committees and planning programs and stuff like that. People who are really passionate about the things they do tend to be pretty successful at them. And I think for parents to be passionate about your children and engaged with your children and doing the best you can, and for children to stay engaged with their, their academics and, and, it's hard, you know, you're not going to tell a teenager, like, "Go be passionate about math class," right? Some of them might be, but most of them probably aren't. But passionate about, you know, educating yourself so you can have a great future and be successful. I think, you know, that's, that's, we, we have all of that, right? And, and that's how I think people will, will continue to succeed in Milford, yeah.
You talk about educating the whole community. People don't talk about it publicly because it's not something you should say, but there are people who are worried about the diversity in the town affecting the quality of education that children will get.
Yeah.
What would be your comment if somebody brought that up?
I, I mean, I think that, you know, people get concerned because, you know, there's the test scores and our report card and all that kind of stuff. But, and I think a lot of that comes from, you know, there might be challenges, children aren't engaged or whatever the case may be. I don't see how having a diverse population, either economically diverse or, you know, ethnically diverse, is a bad thing. I just, I think it helps you to understand where other people are coming from. It doesn't change, I mean, teachers may have to change the way they teach a little bit. They may, we may have to have some kind of Spanish immersion course in the future. I think that would be great. The world is changing. The world is so much smaller than it ever was, even though it's so much bigger. Because we're connected to everyone in the world. I mean, I used to have to sit on conference calls with, you know, Australia and Singapore.
Well, your job, it's an old American bank, right? Santander?
Well, no. It was a few times an old American bank, but now it's an old Spanish bank.
Spanish. But that was my point.
Yeah.
You can't hide from the world.
No, you can't hide from the world. So I, I grew up in a really lovely community that was much more homogeneous and much more, you know, it was pretty well-to-do and, you know, there wasn't, and, and I, I think it was great and it was a wonderful place to, to be raised. I look at the experience my children are having and the things that they're hearing, and I think that they're learning a lot more about the realities of the world, the realities, and that they have, they're, they're forced to be empathetic. And there's children that, you know, are, do struggle, and, and I think my children have it pretty darn easy, I consider, you know, relatively speaking. And, and my children, I think, will, will ultimately benefit. I don't know what they'll grow up to be or do, but I know it'll be something really positive because, you know, because in part, they, they grew up in a, in a diverse community, so.
Then, do you believe having the diverse community? Because what people are worried about is, okay, and let's face it, I have the smartest, most beautiful, most everything daughters in the world because they're mine.
Right.
And every parent probably feels the same way.
Right.
And God bless them for feeling that way.
Yeah.
But what people worry about is if I have kids from the broad spectrum, are the teachers going to lower their standards and not push? Because, you know, we think of special needs.
Yep.
And everybody immediately thinks of the kids below the norm who need help to get higher. But the kids at the top 10% of Milford High are special needs.
Right.
They have special requirements for them. So are we pulling down our educational expectations to teach to mediocrity?
I don't think so. I, I don't think so at all. I mean, I think we have some wonderful teachers, some wonderful educators. I think that they have high expectations for all students, as they should, and they teach to their level. I, I mean, you know, a lot of it, you know, we, we offer AP courses starting really early for, for kids who, who may, you know, be at that top 10% and want to participate. And the other thing is, is again, it's about the student. Like, I think if you're in that top 10%, you're probably an achiever or an overachiever. Uh, and you're going to find ways to overachieve, um, both academically and, um, extra, with extracurriculars and all those kinds of things. So, uh, no, I don't think it does that at all. Um, and, and I think that, you know, we have to, um, offer the right services for the children that need those services, right? We need, and I think we do that really well, too. I mean, um, and then where we can't offer those services or we don't have those services, we need to make provisions for that. That happens in every community, you know what I mean? Every community has kids who are, who struggle or who need extra help or who, you know, English is their second language or whatever the case may be. We just happen to have on the English as a second language, a bit of a higher population of, of children. Um, but I, I've, I mean, I've never experienced a teacher sort of accepting mediocrity because that's what they've come to expect. Um, and I can't imagine a teacher would, you know, get into teaching and, and want that of themselves, too, so.
You mentioned that we invest a lot in our special needs population. Are we investing enough?
I don't necessarily think so. I, I think that there's a lot more I'm sure that we could be doing. Um, I met with Lucy Jenkins and, and she's lovely and I think she's doing an awesome job. Um, there's always more, there's always more we could be doing for, for our children. Um, special needs, um, ELL.
Are we doing enough?
The top ten percent. I mean, I think we're doing what we can, from what I've seen, I'd have to like do a little more. I don't have, you know, I don't have a situation where I've had to deal, face, you know, I haven't had occasion to interact with any of the services provided for special needs children. I've talked to people, um, I went to the, um, council and disability meeting, I, I met your daughter briefly, um, uh, last week and, and I met a couple people there.
Yeah, two quiet and shy people, Alexis and Harold.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, and I've met people, I met a woman there who, you know, was, I asked her specifically about the services. Thrilled with what was being offered. I've also met parents who are, who've not been content and have pulled their children out of Milford schools. So it's really hard to say, are we doing enough? I think we're doing everything that we can and we can always do more. And I think if you would talk to the special education folks in Milford, they would say the same exact thing. They're doing everything they can, they're passionate about it, they believe in the children, they want them to have the best opportunities available. Um, you can always do more.
Let's talk, as you say, you can always do more. I'll ask you a topic, profanity. Words like two and a half override or dead exclusion, which to me are about the most profane words I hear at the finance committee.
Yeah.
What do you think when people say, should we consider two and a half overrides and dead exclusions?
I mean, I think it, it all depends on the circumstance, right? You go forward with a budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, you approve the budget, you hope you can do everything you wanna do with that budget. Um, I've, I've been a town meeting member, right, for the last year or so. Um, I've attended town meetings many times prior to becoming a town meeting member. Um, and I've heard many times how wonderfully the FinCom does and how we've, um, we're a very fiscally responsible town. Um, and I think that's great. Um, I, I think that schools are the lifeblood of any town. Uh, you know, we can have businesses and we can have all of these sorts of things, but you want a community of people who, who wanna be involved and engaged in the community. That starts with the education system, in my mind. Um, so do we need an override? Not right now. Um, is it something that if it ever came down to it, we need to consider? Of course, because, you know, any town, right, would, would have to look at something like that and say, what is it, what's the trade-off here? And I, I do believe the investment in the schools is the best investment we can make.
Are we making enough of investment? Right now, we're at sixty-two percent, so over sixty million a year. And of course, school committee would tell me it's nowhere near that.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause they don't consider that we pay the health insurance for all the teachers, you know, all the benefits out of the town budget. We pay the mortgages, uh, bonds, you know, I mean. This year, we just finished, well, last year, we finished Woodland. Now I got a couple million bucks a year we gotta pay on that.
Right.
We pay that separately. And then we deal with the school committee on two buckets. One is sped and ELL.
Mm-hmm.
And one is normal operating.
Yep.
And also capital, so maybe it's three. And we try and hold the school responsible for that capital, 'cause a lot of that has to do with how much maintenance you do.
Right.
But the routine day-to-day.
Mm-hmm.
You know, where, let's face it, I mean, I've said it publicly, it's two-point-something percent and we'll do sped and ELL at what it is.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause our biggest worry's always been, I don't need somebody from Beacon Hill or Capitol Hill telling me, or town meeting, nobody's ever needed to tell town meeting how to take care of Milford kids.
Right.
Town meeting always takes care of Milford kids.
Yeah.
So putting money into sped and ELL has been controversial, 'cause we've had people who get a bit confused and tend to be a bit economical with the truth when they say, if you don't put money into there, uh, the kids won't come. But you have to, number one, because it's a law.
Yeah.
But more than anything, these kids are no more special, no less special.
Right.
Than any of the forty-two hundred we have.
Of course.
But when you look at the budget, do you feel comfortable that as school committee, we're gonna hold you to managing the discretionary spending?
Mm-hmm.
Including salaries.
Right. You know, from what I've seen, I, I think that, again, always more that can be done. I think our teachers, I, my understanding is, you know, relative to Hapkinton or, you know, Holliston or some of the more affluent communities around us are probably slightly under their, their average. I wouldn't say they're not under the average of the state from everything I've read. Um, so I, I don't think the school, um, is spending money unnecessarily. Um, so, you know, I think that you, you hash it out during, you know, the budgeting season and you, you hope for the best. Now, what I have seen, and again, so you talk about the, the additional monies that are being spent sort of elsewhere in town that aren't part of the budget, right? If we do look at the budget that the school committee has given, it's been fairly flat, um, or that the schools are given, it's been fairly flat in the annual budget.
Two-point-something percent increases for the last.
Right.
Umpteen years.
Right, well, yeah, I think it was, I, yeah, so it's been pretty flat. Um, we're, we're still doing really well, I think, um, as a, as a school and a, a school system. Um, it'll change next year, our population's gonna continue to change. We're gonna continue to need additional services, um, for the, the people that are coming into this town and, um, and we'll just have to address that then. I think it's great that Milford's been so, so fiscally responsible and that the school committee and the FinCom have been able to come together during the budget season process and, you know, and hash things out so that we don't end up in a situation where we need an override. Um, so, you know.
Yeah, you'll get the inside now, 'cause everybody always says, look how smooth your budget process is, and we all start laughing.
Yeah, I know it's not smooth, I know.
This is the time of year when Kevin and Joe come.
Mm-hmm.
And we sit there as FinCom saying, we are destitute, we're broke.
Yeah.
We have no money.
Right.
And they're like, oh, all we need is a ninety-nine billion dollar increase to keep up with the times. And, you know, you, okay, we have to go through that mating ritual, okay. And then at the end, it becomes two-point-something percent. But like last year, sped and ELL went up over six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Now, if we didn't fund that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if, I say we, the town meeting, 'cause you know, as I've always said, FinCom, to me, are one of the, it's a group of the most influential powerless people.
Yeah.
'Cause they don't even get a vote. Yeah, all we can do is say, town meeting, this is what we think.
Right, but how long did we actually discuss that at town meeting, that budget versus the chickens?
Versus the, God bless the chickens. Um, but you know, you think through it.
Yeah.
And we are increasing, I mean, six hundred, eight hundred thousand on top of a two and a half percent.
Yeah.
On top of, you know, the increase for, you know, two-point-something for the school.
Yeah.
On top of the health, it gets pretty substantial. I mean, every year overall, I think it's been five, six, seven percent increases.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it's what we're gonna need to, you talk about the ELL, I think the high schools at twelve percent ELL, but the elementary schools are at thirty-five percent, right? Uh, this is the.
It's coming.
It's coming, and, and we just have to continue to manage it. And I think as a school committee member, you know, I, I think that the school committee's doing it today and, and, and hopefully if elected, I would do it, too. You, you have to be reasonable, you have to advocate. I mean, their job is to advocate for those, those students and for those educators because, um, you know, they, they, as I said, I believe they're sort of the lifeblood of any community, right? The, the schools and the.
Why else are we working if it's not for our kids?
Exactly, exactly.
You know, I mean, you're, you're flying this weekend, you're flying next week.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably not to get away from your husband.
No.
You know, it's not like, hey, I wanna go on a trip by myself and go on vacation.
No, and I miss my kids dearly when I have to go.
Well, that's, that's my point.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you do these things because you do believe providing a healthy home.
Yep.
Is what you wanna do for your kids. If we can't provide a strong school system, then why are we here?
Right, yeah.
Now, people look at Milford, and you said you want it to be a destination. I tend to agree, but they look and they say, ooh, your test scores.
Mm-hmm.
They're a lot lower than towns around us.
Right.
Does that mean my kid's gonna get a worse education if they come to Milford?
Right, I looked at those report cards and it's, I, I think, if my recollection is correct, it was only two thousand, maybe sixteen and two thousand seventeen that had gone down to a level two, before, before that, we were a level three, three school. Um, the test scores are not, it's, you know, they're making those decisions on like fractions, right? And very small margins of points. It's not like Milford's testing at a seventy and everyone else is testing at a ninety, right? Uh, it's not that. So I, do I think that we want to improve our test scores? Of course, we wanna improve our test scores, we wanna improve our overall report card. Um, but I think we need to also make sure that, you know, as we're talking about this, that it's not like looked at like it's, it's so dire. Um, there's an opportunity to raise those scores and get ourselves back to the level, I'm sorry, we're level three.
We're level three, get back to level two.
Get back to a level two.
Yeah.
Um, get back to a level two. Um, again, we're gonna continue to be challenged, right, with the population and the kids that are coming up, and it's gonna get harder and harder, and we're gonna have to keep making investments and making investments, and we're going to have to make sure that we're offering a diversity of programs and services for, for kids. But, um, but we can get there, and I think we can get there, I think the plan that the district has put in place, um, is a good one and one that'll really help us to get there. Um, and then, you know, then it's really up to the kids. And, you know, my mom said to me, we moved a lot when I was little and, um, you know, we moved to many places and we landed when I was in high, almost high school in Long Meadow, Massachusetts, which is right outside of.
Kansas, it's way out there.
Yeah, basically. And, uh, it was a great school system. And my mom said, every time I moved, I picked the right school, and she's an educator, right? She's a Title One teacher, actually, um, in Bourne Schools now. And, and she said, but, you know, now, now that she's in Bourne, which is a school system not unlike Milford, you know, you've got Otis Air Force Base, very transient, um, she's like, I, I recognize, i- it's not about the schools as much, the schools are doing good jobs, the schools are offering the services, the schools are doing what they can, it really is about the student and the parent. And, um, so we gotta keep working on that and we gotta make sure that people understand everything that we have in this town and that our test scores do not define everything our education system offers.
Do you think people understand the real interpretation of those test scores?
No, I don't. I think I, and if you look at like Facebook, I think there's a lot of like fear and, um, and, and, and misunderstanding, certainly. I, you know, no one wants to, to, to be here that they're at the bottom twenty percent of all performing schools in Massachusetts. Um, but if you look at the top twenty percent, we're not gonna, unfortunately, we're just not the community that's gonna necessarily be those either because we don't have the tax base that a, you know, that a, one of those towns might have, right? Um, so, so we have to continue to do what we're doing.
I remember when my oldest, um, went to, back then, Middle School East, when it was open. You had a fellow who ran it as his fiefdom, Tommy Davin. Loved Tommy. That was his world.
Yeah.
And he approached it, that we were putting our children in his care.
Yeah.
So in his little world, you know, people say fiefdom, bad, no. When you put your child in Tommy's world, he took it as a personal responsibility.
Yeah.
To do everything he could for those kids.
Yep.
And one day I walked in and I said, Tommy, why do your MCAS scores suck? I knew I was gonna get a reaction, 'cause that, you know, that's a personal shot.
Yeah.
And I got the reaction, 'cause he looked at me and he says, because you're ignorant. And I said, great, enlighten me.
Right.
And he showed me the data, and although we report a homogenized and average number.
Right.
There were two distinct bimodal Gaussian curves.
Yeah.
And he looked, he said, now, our top kids, he goes, I'll put my kids up again, and it was, you could see the pride, it was his kids, it's like, no, that's my daughter. He goes, no, mine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll put my kids up against any town around here and I won't fall short.
Right.
What the other towns don't have is that second Gaussian curve.
Yeah.
Of the kids coming in.
Right.
Who are just learning the language.
Right.
But when you average the two, our numbers look a lot lower.
Right.
But I really don't care about this theoretical average.
Right.
I care about my kid.
Right, exactly, and that's exactly, I like, you know, like we said, it's not about the, the school, the schools are all doing the best they can, it's, it is about the student and about the children and, you know, finding that balance. And I said before, I don't believe we, you know, sort of lower our standards of education. I don't think the school does that at all. I think that we keep educating children to the best we can, we give children who might be at the bottom of that curve, children at the top of the curve, the best opportunities we possibly can. Um, you know, just some of the programs that, um, Mr. Ottland's putting in place, right, with the, um, you know, parallel college education, you know, the work that they're doing with Framingham State and, and things like that, I mean, right there, it's like, you know, we're trying to show kids the, the opportunity that they have for secondary education, but we're also offering that top twenty percent an opportunity that they, they're not gonna find necessarily in another school system around us. So, um, you know, and that's where I talk about like how we market ourselves and how we explain ourselves. You know, it's unfortunate that, you know, we focus on one test score, right? And we say, this is, this is the definition, and it's an average and it's not, you know, a clear picture of the whole student or the whole population. Um, and so, you know, I think we can do, all of us, a much better job, sort of talking in those terms, right? And when you get people, like I said before, when you get people who are, who are passionate and, and, and engaged and like believe in Milford and the students and the educators, like, that changes everything, right? That changes everything, um, for the kids who are attending school here, for the people who might wanna move here, um, and we end up in a, I think, a much, you know, a much better situation. It doesn't, it doesn't happen overnight, but.
Well, I think you, you met my quiet and shy daughter. She put it into perspective once when the sped budget had just rocketed and we were talking about, I don't know how we're gonna find the money, we'll find it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and she said, well, look, whatever you do as a town meeting or the FinCom, um, I know what my role is. My responsibility is to get every child to their potential, and maybe a little bit more.
Right.
As long as I'm doing that, town meeting will take care of us.
Yeah.
And it was funny because, you know, when I thought about it, I said, here's a young teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Who really understood. It wasn't the selectmen, the school committee. It was two hundred plus Milfordians getting together and making sure that we take care of our kids.
Yep.
And somehow it always seems to work.
It does. It does work.
One of the big topics, obviously, um, that you read every day is security.
Yes.
Am I safe sending my child to Milford?
I believe so. We have the double entry at, you know, locks at every school. Um, I always feel safe sending my kids to Milford. It is a crazy world we live in today and it's, um, unfortunate that my children and, you know, your grandchildren are being taught to shelter in place or flee or whatever they have to do. Um, but, you know, they're teaching them those things to keep them safe and in, in the case, you know, in case of a worst case scenario. Um, but I feel very confident with, um, sending my children to school in Milford, yes.
No need to adopt these things of arm every child or every child goes to school with a bazooka or?
Yeah. No. And, you know, teachers, educators, they, they wanna be teachers. They don't wanna be security guards. They, um, I, I, I think that we have to figure out other ways to, to protect our children, whether, you know, we have security that we hire that works at the school or, again, if we're more aware of the children that are struggling or suffering, you know, in many cases that, you know, if we look at a lot of the school shootings, that's a lot of what it is, is children, children who are, um, suffering and struggling. And there's some really obvious signs that, that things are not well. Um, and, you know, we have to teach our children to be empathetic and vigilant to those situations. Um, and that's.
But now, I mean, you think about it, I don't know that you could ever stop a hundred percent without turning every school into a fortress.
No.
But should the school committee be thinking about things like, you know, we go to the cafeteria for best buddies dance.
Right.
And you look around, there's all this single pane glass or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's things we can do with making the glass a little thicker or, you know, little things that don't affect the educational environment.
Mm-hmm.
But may slow down an attack on our kids long enough that Tom Olafland can gather the troops.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I think you, we talk to, you know, Chief Olafland, we talk to people and kinda get what their recommendation is without being like, you know, so extremist to say, let's arm every child and teacher. Um, certainly we want their input, you know, um, but if they recommend those things, like, yeah, of course we should consider them. But as, as parents, as educators and as school committee members, I think our focus needs to be on, um, the, the mental wellbeing of our children and making sure they're taken care of, um, and doing all we can to protect them in that way, right? Um, you know.
And I don't see any extreme. I mean, you know, when I hear about arming teachers and putting armed guards or what, okay. Uh, but maybe we can do some things that are a little less obvious.
Yeah.
You know, like even taking a place where you have a majority of kids.
Yeah.
And hardening it just enough. Having a fast action team or something.
Sure. I heard of something the other day where they have like, um, like smoke things that teacher, another one school that in Ohio, I think, that implemented something where a teacher could set off like a smoke alarm thing that would, you know, deter someone. I mean, there's, there's tons of things you can look at, um, and options that, that you can look at. I mean, it is a unfortunate, like, reality in our world today. Um, but I think that, um, you know, I, I, I think we're doing everything we can. And right now with Milford and the double locks, I think that is obviously really important.
Some of them are counterintuitive, because, you know, I read one of the problems with a recent shooting was if you hit the fire alarm, all the doors unlock to let all the kids.
Out, yeah.
Out away from a fire.
Right.
Okay. Doesn't that open all the security doors to let somebody in? On the other hand, if there's a way of hitting a button and all the parts of the school locked down, what happens if some psycho or some less than intelligent person does that and sets a fire?
Right.
So I'm not smart enough to figure it out.
No.
But I certainly would like to have somebody much smarter than me. Just talk about it.
Yeah.
See if there's some smaller things we can do.
Sure.
Um, buildings.
Yes.
What do you think of the school buildings?
Um, you know, I think that, again, I've only been really in one a lot and that's Memorial where my daughter attends school. Um, and I think it's great. Um, I think that, you know, they'll have to look at the population because Memorial's getting a little bit bigger, you know, big, right, in terms of the number of students and Brookside has more space. So, you know.
Well, moving them. I mean, I always loved this idea of, well, we want kids, women, they're half a mile apart.
I know.
Yeah, it's not like you're sending them to Long Meadow.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, though, although as a parent that's in a memorial district, that could easily be a Brookside district, cause we're way out there in the Midway line. Um, you know, I, I've grown fond of it.
The difference to living on Virginia Drive and sending your child to Memorial or Brookside, I mean, it could be an extra forty seconds of bus time.
Right. Right. So, yeah, so I'm a bad example, but, um, so I think, but I think both of those schools, I think the schools have done a great job, um, integrating technology, um, into the schools. And I'm sure you saw, we were showcased recently. Um, I think that the high school, um, you know, is the big next thing that, that, that people will be talking about and kinda figuring out the high school and is it big enough?
Eight more years.
Yeah, that's what they're thinking before retirement.
I keep saying there's a school coming. You know, it's been eight to ten years that we planned for Brookside, then eight to ten years for Woodland.
Yeah.
Um, I personally can't see that we would do away with the current high school. We built half a school when we did Brookside. That was to move three hundred kids.
Yeah.
Where would we take eleven hundred?
Right.
And, you know, when you look at the space, we've added one child per year since that high school opened. Graduating class nineteen seventy-four, first one out of there, two hundred twenty-two. I think last year was two sixty, forty years later.
Wow.
Now, the needs, the square footage per child has grown.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, you know, to me, it seems like we have a bunker there that we need to renovate it. We need to expand some places. But boy, that place, she still looks solid.
Certainly. Again, I, I, I haven't dug into it, but I know it'll be the topic of conversation over the next three to eight years. Um, as we look at it, I think, you know, anyone who would wanna see our high school be, um, sort of modernized.
At the level that Woodland is.
Yeah, of course. Of course. Why wouldn't we? Um, but we have to see what's realistic and what we can accomplish, you know, for those students.
Now, have you been involved with the Chromebook initiative at all? I mean, your kids are a couple of years too young.
Yes. So, um, my daughter had, um, has just been introduced to the Chromebooks. They brought him into the second grade. They kind of, you know, share him around. But, um, but no, we'll be fully in it next year. So.
Well, I'm from Milford, Sarah.
Yeah.
Why should I vote for you?
Well, I'm from Milford, too. And I just, I really, um, I, clearly I believe in these schools. I believe in this town and I think that I would do a great job. And I bring a lot, my human resources profession, uh, background, um, I think would, would be helpful. And, um, so hopefully you will vote for me.
And as always, my hat goes off to anybody who's not only talking about things should get better, but all seven people who've raised their hand and said, I wanna try, I'm willing to help make things better. I'll never ask you to vote for a candidate. Not my place. But I'll beg you, get to know these candidates, whether you watch them on our show, whether you watch them on Kevin Rudden's, the town crier, whether you go to the senior center. Get to know these people. Pick the one that you believe is most like you. And then please, I'll beg you, as always, get out and vote. So as always, to our six loyal viewers, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.